Okay, it's seven o'clock. Welcome to the planning board meeting. Would you join in a pledge of allegiance?
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Pashon. Mr. Giardino.
Present.
Mr. Cosell.
Here.
Mr. Malton.
Here.
Mr. Mixel.
Present.
Mrs. Wright.
Here.
Mr. Artuso.
Here.
Mr. DiMarco.
Here.
Okay, we have three items on the agenda. Fairfield is back again for the approval they were in. The last meeting on the nineteenth, and we tabled it to this evening. They did not receive the final approval they were requesting. And they asked to come back with more detail, which they get due. And I think we're in decent shape now. So just wanted to do a little presentation.
Good evening. I'm Joshua, simple as you with the Haskell Company. Appreciate you having us come before you guys again. Just wanted to give you a quick update since our last meeting on the nineteenth. First of all, at the meeting, one of the neighbors had expressed some concerns, Erica. And we met with her afterwards, and I just wanted to let you guys know that we were able to talk through her concerns. She was concerned about the sewer and about drainage. We were able to discuss those and take care of the concerns that she was having at the time. So that was a good conversation, and we're able to get care of that. And then the other thing since our last meeting, we did submit the consolidation plan. So that has been submitted to the town. And we also submitted the subdivision documents as well. So those have all been turned out.
And we didn't close the public hearing. We left it open. And anticipating any neighbors who had any comments, they could have either presented. They never had a chance to mobilize if anyone wishes to speak either for or against this project. I see anymore. Okay, then what we're gonna do at this point, I'm gonna close the public hearing, bring it back to the board. We've all been through this thing. This project, it's never been a project in this town. It's been reviewed by more engineers, attorneys, and so I don't know where it ever was. So it's gone through the whole routine. And based on that, I think we're in pretty good shape. Is there any questions anybody has to ask the applicant? Anybody? No? I think they did a great job. Yeah, I think they did a very good job. We've got this, you're applying for a sign too, correct?
We did include an additional sign information.
I think, I think why don't we do this? I think we guys really can keep the sign as a separate item at the end. Like in any project, we always have approval and just have a motion for the sign, right?
Sure.
You agree?
Yep.
Okay, we'll do that. All right, so based on that. Oh man, let's see. You're gonna have to bear with us here, folks. There's papers, and they all have to be entered in. It's gonna be a whole lot of reading. It's not what we all want to do, but it's gotta be done. So based on that, at this point, I think I'll make a, make a motion for preliminary site plan approval for the Fairlife project. And I'll start with this. Whereas Fairlife LLC, the applicant, has applied to the planning board for subdivision approval combined into a single new five-lot adjoining lots totaling approximately 110 acres at the end of Tibor Road. And the applicant has applied to the planning board for preliminary and site plan approval for a milk processing facility. And it's consisting of multiple buildings and exterior equipment, storage, tanks, related parking, utilities, grading, and landscaping to be located on the premises. And whereas a notice by public hearing of this matter was duly published in the town official newspaper on September thirteenth, twenty-three, and September twenty-seventh. And posted in the town's bulletin board is required by the Town of Webster Code, two six nine dash eight. Whereas said public hearing was in fact conducted by the town planning board on the nineteenth of September at seven PM, town board meeting room. And all interested persons were heard, and the matter was discussed. And the public hearing was continued to this meeting at the request of the applicant. And said public hearing was in fact conducted by the town planning board on October third, twenty-twenty-three, at seven PM in the town board planning room, meeting room. And all interested persons were heard, and the matter was fully discussed. And whereas the planning board makes the following findings. The project is classified as a Type One action pursuant to State Environmental Quality Review Act. And, uh... And supplemental regulations, and this is the secret process. The project was the subject of coordinated environmental review for which the town board was the lead agency for this project. And the planning board was an involved agency. And on September seventh, following the review of the full environmental assessment form, the supplemental information provided by the applicant and other interested or involved parties, the town board issued a negative declaration pursuant to secret indicating that there would be no significant adverse environmental impact. And on September twelfth, the zoning board appeals approved all the necessary variances relating to placement of two separate fences within the buffer area and to the height of the automated storage and retrieval system warehouse and the milk and processed liquid storage silos. In its role as lead agency, the town board exercised due diligence in identifying and notifying involved agencies, including the planning board, and pursuant to the secret regulation section six one seven point six B. The lead agency's negative declaration is binding on all involved agencies, including the planning board. So the planning board has considered the lead agency's negative declaration and reviewed additional detailed information related to traffic, buffering noise, lighting, stormwater management, and other relative, relevant issues. The planning board finds that the project is consistent with the project reviewed by the zoning board appeals and that to the maximum extent possible, the minimum requirements of the town zoning orders have been met. And whereas the planning board finds that the project will meet the standards and requirements of the town code and recommends to the town board approval of the application for an industrial use permit such the conditions of this site plan approval and such other conditions as the town board may deem fit and appropriate. So there are now four, let it be resolved that secret regulation required and no further environmental review of the project by the planning board and to resolve the requirements of the town code two ninety-six dash nineteen and two ninety-six twenty-one. At grade level, that the form of the building line shall be one quarter inch per foot above the center of the road is hereby waived due to the type within the subdivision, including the observations that the premises is a 110 acre property, including the building structures, roads, sidewalks, lawns, and parking lots. Having positive drainage through stormwater management system, including dry swells. And it's resolved that the site plan is hereby granting preliminary approvals pursuant to town code section two sixty-nine dash eleven. This is subject to the following conditions. All improvements, modifications, and/or restoration efforts to Tibor Road, Basket Road, and the truck turnaround provided at the eastern terminus of Tibor Road, including but not limited to intersections, widening, geometry, and alignment modifications, striping, returning lanes, installations, and so forth, shall meet the standards as established by the Town of Webster Highway Superintendent. And the authorities have jurisdiction and shall be completed on the, in the effort and expense of the applicant. Including design permitting, approvals, construction, and inspection. All improvements related, relating to Tibor Road, Basket Road, and the truck turnaround shall be... Is that news? It's very good. All right. Number two. Okay, so we're right to that. And let's see, number two, the applicant recognizes that while a future extension of the route or a former multi-use trail has been proposed east-west along the southern property boundary line at the time of site plan approval, no construction plans, financing, or project sponsors for the said trail are in place. The applicant shall retain a sufficient area of twenty feet in continuous width along the southern property boundary to the Ontario, Giddlin, Lamonia, Evan, Lakeville, Ravello property boundary. As it's parallel to the Ontario, Lakeville radius, and so on. It's in our same tracks. Short it up a little bit here. And it is to be unencumbered by surface improvements. For further dedication and easement to Monroe County or its designated for the purposes of the construction and maintenance by others of a future multi-use trail. And provided that there are no significant changes to the signage as presented to the planning board on September nineteenth, submit building and monument onsite and offsite signage plan to the Director of Community Development for approval and subdivision for approval to the zoning board of appeals if applicable. Submit maintenance and protection of traffic signs for onsite vehicular movement along with the building permit application. We don't need that, right? Okay, we'll skip that, we'll skip it. And let's see, getting bored yet? I'm getting tired. Okay. Provide detailed plans, a basis of design report for the pretreatment wastewater treatment plant. And as the WWTP is a schedule for the ramp up of flows in the flow meter systems, metering system, and the discharge from the pretreatment water system. And provide an engineering report and basis of design. Design plans and details for the onsite water treatment, and this is public and private. And the onsite sanitary sewer system, public and private also. And secure all the necessary permits and approvals. And as applicable, provide a private statement of dedication of utilities. And let's see, here, folks, everywhere. And the applicant shall combine the lots and both the premises in conformity with all details of the proposal as presented in the written descriptions and site development plans dated September twenty-nine, twenty-three as orally presented to the planning board and as set forth here. In the event of any conflict, combining the oral and written descriptions of the proposal, the site development plans of the proposal, or the requirements or restrictions of this resolution which the Director of Community Development cannot resolve to his satisfaction and satisfaction of the applicant, the applicant agrees that the planning board shall resolve such review and resolve such dispute. The applicant shall obtain all other necessary town, county, state, federal government approvals and other permits that are required for the project and premises, including a permit for connection to county or state roads. Approval of the water system, approval of the pretreatment water WWT patient. And the town shall be provided with copies of records of applications for an approval status of all such other necessary permits. The applicant is responsible for removal and proper offsite disposal of any brush, trees, and debris, or any lot clearing. Topsoil excavations through the premises during the cleaning and rubbing operation shall remain on site. Offsite water mains and fire hydrants shall be installed and be in proper operating condition prior to the commencement of any enclosed construction. No building permits shall be issued until all sheets in the applicable drawing set with all necessary signatures have been provided to the town. Suitable access roads and temporary street signs shall be installed and maintained so as to provide continuous access for freight apartment and other emergency vehicles prior to the commencement of any enclosed construction. Prior to missions and building permit, the applicant shall submit to the town evidence in the form of certified copy of the D or an attorney certification certificate of title as checked against the platte boundaries that demonstrates that the applicant owns the premises and a tax search showing no unpaid taxes. The applicant shall submit to the town evidence that the notice of intent is to be covered by a speedy permit for stormwater discharge from construction activity applicable to the 110 acres. And premises has been, has been filed with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. If a NOI is not already on file with the New York State D E C, then throughout the life of the stormwater permit, from filing of the notice of intent, the notice of termination, the applicant, the applicant shall comply fully with all aspects of the D E C general pro deck number. The planning board acknowledges that the final locations and dimensions of proposed improvements included but not limited to buildings, utilities, paved areas, and other fixed improvements within the boundary, within the premises ordinarily subject to technical integrity may be subject to minor changes or adjustments under the requirements of New York State Building and Fire Codes and New York State Environmental Conservation Law and/or Town of Webster Industrial Use Permit. Such minor changes are deemed to be approved and consistent with intent of this site plan approval provided they occur during the design permitting of construction prior to issuance of certificates of occupancy for the original project, unless otherwise determined by the Director of Community Development. Any changes to locations or dimensions of proposed improvements which the Director of Community Development determines not to be consistent with the intent of this approval shall be subject to planning board approval. This condition is generally applicable to the area of the premises within the security fencing shown on the approval site plan. It shall be, it shall not be construed for, to authorize construction of any facilities outside of the security fence or beyond the scope of the facility operations as proposed. And the applicant shall, as a condition, proceed to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for any building, submit to the building inspector a certificate of the registered architect or licensed engineer who signed the plans submitted to the building inspector with the application for such building permit. That such building has been substantially completed in accordance with the plans and specifications, therefore approved by the building inspector. And shall provide an as-built drawing within six months after the commencement of production and a plan of completion of all proposed improvements. And shall be prepared by a New York State licensed land surveyor and a New York State licensed professional engineer. Said as-built shall include buildings, building pad elevations, and exterior utilities, including inverts and rim elevations, paved areas, final grading certificate, and entire site and other fixed improvements as completed. As addition, in addition to the certification by the applicant's representatives and required by New York State law, the required map signatures are those of the town engineer, highway superintendent, assessor, fire marshal, planning board chair, Webster Sewer District staff, and Monroe County Health Department and Monroe County Water Authority. And all plans required to be filed with Monroe County shall be filed. The applicant's design professionals shall address final engineering comments and concerns, including but not limited to the following. Provided technical specifications proposed for construction prior to the pre-construction meeting. Provide landscape plans sealed and signed by a New York State licensed landscape architect along with a written detailed discussion of the planings chosen. Since the direct electrical connections to the substations are underground, provide the location in detail for the transfers which the commercial generator can be hooked up to in the event emergency generator power is needed. And further development and/or additional structures that are not shown on the approved site plan will not be permitted on the premises if the Director of Community Development terms such development or structures are not consistent with the intended set plan approval. And provide a letter of credit in the form acceptable to the town attorney and the town board. And all of these conditions of site plan approval by the planning board shall be listed on the cover sheet of filed plans along with the date and approval. I'm almost there. Just a little more. Secure and, secure an industrial use permit from the Webster Town Board and apply the set approvals and conditions as any. Address New York State D E C's comments on the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan and requirements, and obtain and provide to the Director of Community Development acknowledgement, letter permit from the D E C confirming applicant is satisfied with New York State D E C with the requirements of the swift report we have been back. And execute a stormwater management agreement with the town. And the stormwater management agreement will outline the requirements and responsibilities of the applicant relative to the onsite, onsite stormwater infrastructure approvals, including but not limited to stormwater detention plans, storm sewers, manholes, downspouts, and storm sewer inlets and outlets, or other components that make up the stormwater handling system. And that's it, we're done. So that being a motion, you need a second. I'll second. Do we have a motion in the second?
Mr. Pashon.
Joshua.
May I interrupt for one, one brief thing? I'm Tom Walsh. I'm the attorney for, for Fairlife. And as you read the approval resolution, we're seeking both preliminary and final site plan approval so that it's which is a requirement before we can get the industrial use permit. And I just wanted to make sure, I thought I heard only preliminary approval was being given.
Okay, what we do, an approval on a project?
Yes.
We first give preliminary approval?
Yes.
If that passes, we'll request the board for a final approval. That's the second one. If the board goes with that, that'll be second approval.
Thank you. I apologize for interrupting. I just wanted to...
Yeah.
I'll just...
You're okay.
Thank you.
We understand. All right. I'm sorry, got messed up there. I need a motion, you second.
Mr. Pashon. Mr. Mr. Giardino.
Yes.
Mr. Malton.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Cosell.
Aye.
Mr. Mixel.
Aye.
Mrs. Wright.
Aye.
Okay, along with that then now, you need someone for a final approval?
I'd love to do that. Okay. You start with the more asking?
No, well, you gotta just basically resolve.
It's subject to all preliminary approval conditions. So no further development of this site is the...
That's correct.
Okay.
And significant construction?
Significant construction shall occur within one year as deemed by the planning board. Expire on October the third, two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay, that be a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay, you need a second?
Second.
You have a second.
Mr. Giardino.
Aye.
Mr. Malton.
Aye.
Mrs. Wright.
Aye.
Mr. Mixel.
Aye.
Mr. Cosell.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Pashon.
Aye. All right, we also have to do is approvals for a preliminary subdivision approval.
Yep, I would like to make a motion for Fairlife LLC preliminary subdivision approval. Whereas Fairlife LLC, the applicant, has applied to the planning board for subdivision approval to combine into a single new lot five adjoining lots totaling approximately 110.4 acres at the end of Tibor Road, referred to as the premises. And whereas the applicant has applied to the planning board for preliminary subdivision approval for a milk processing facility, the project, um, future referred to, consisting of multiple buildings and exterior equipment, storage tanks, related parking, utilities, grading, and landscaping to be located on the premises. And whereas notice of a public hearing of this matter was duly published in the town's official newspaper on September thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, and September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three, and posted on the town's bulletin board as required by the Webster Town Code, section two sixty-nine dash eight. And whereas said public hearings, hearing was in fact conducted by the town planning board on September nineteenth at seven PM in the town planning board meeting room, town board meeting room. And all interested persons were heard, and the matter was discussed. And, and the public hearing was continued to this meeting at the request of the applicant. And whereas said public hearing was in fact conducted by the town planning board on October third at seven PM in the town board meeting room. And all interested persons were heard, and the matter was fully discussed. And whereas the planning board makes the following findings. The project is classified as a Type One action pursuant to the, to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, New York State Environmental Conservation Law Article Eight. And it's implementing regulations, secret regulations, six N O C R R, or six one seven, likely known as secret. The project was the subject of a coordinated environmental review for which the town board was lead agency and the planning board was, was an involved agency. On September twenty-seven, following the review of the full environmental assessment form and...
September.
September seventh, what did I say?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. September seventh, twenty-twenty-three, thank you. Following the review of the full environment assessment form and supplemental information provided by the applicant and other interested or involved parties, the town board issued a negative declaration, excuse me, pursuant to secret indicating that there would be no significant adverse environmental impact. On September twelfth, twenty-twenty-three, the zoning board of appeals approved all the necessary variances relating to placement of two separate fences within the buffer area and to the height of the automated storage and retrieval system warehouse and the milk and liquid and processed liquid storage silos. In its role as lead agency, the town board exercised due diligence in identifying and notifying involved agencies, including the planning board, and pursuant to the secret regulation section six seventeen dash B, section three, paragraph three.
That's good.
Good enough. Good enough.
It's, it's, we'll have that anyways in the record, so.
The lead agency's negative declaration is binding on all above agencies, including the planning board. The planning board has considered the lead agency's negative declaration and reviewed additional detailed information related to the traffic, buffering, noise, lighting, stormwater management, and other relevant issues. The planning board finds that the, finds that the project to be consistent with the project reviewed by the zoning board of appeals, and that to the maximum extent possible, the minimum requirements of the town zoning ordinance have been met. The planning board finds that the project will meet the standards and requirements of Webster Town Code, section three fifty twenty-two D two, and recommends to the town board approval of the application for an industrial use permit, subject to the conditions of the site plan approval and such other conditions as the town board may deem fit and appropriate. Now therefore be resolved, resolved that the seeker regulations require no further environmental review of the project by the planning board, resolved that the subdivision combining into a single new lot, new lot, the five adjoining lots totaling approximately one hundred and ten point four acres at the end of Tibor Road is hereby granted final approval. This is preliminary approval, isn't it?
Yes.
Preliminary approval pursuant to Town Code, section two ninety-six dash one ninety-one C, subject to the following conditions, and this one is going to take me a minute to bear with me, I presume I need to read, I've seen one of these numbers into the record?
I don't think you have to go through the notes.
Do I need to read all of this?
No, because that'll, that'll be in the rock and roll. There'll be different parcels, there are five different parcels. All right, you agree?
Yes.
Okay, so the, am I good with the first part of this?
Yeah, still go, go to the next one.
Okay, so one, the applicant suffers cause of the parcel of real property tax, there's, there's all, all of the parcels that are shown on exhibit A, all of the different tax parcels and how they're made compliance is included on exhibit A. And it's attached to this motion and made part hereof. The applicant shall execute and report all deeds and maps no later than October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. The applicant shall place the following certificates on the subdivision's plan map. A, it is hereby certified that all lots shown hereon fully comply with the zoning ordinance, chapter three fifty, and the subdivision rules and regulations of the town of Webster. B, the subdivision is well drained and is not subject to flooding or standing water. C, all sanitary sewers are and or shall be installed in compliance with the specifications and sewer policy of the town of Webster. And D, all right of ways for public utilities indicated on this map shall be considered temporary easements to the town of Webster, which easements shall be made for the purpose of ingress and egress to maintain utilities, and the town may also assign such easements for the purpose of extending utilities. And, and that's the whole two.
I'll second.
Okay. This is right.
Before, before we vote, I'm sure. Four members can just show their, raise in their hand. Everyone has a copy of exhibit A, which are the two firsts. If I show hands, everybody has that? I think the record should reflect everyone's hands.
Okay, we have a motion for preliminary subdivision approval. I'll second.
Mrs. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Giardino?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Cussoni?
Aye.
Everybody's still awake? I believe so.
Well, let me.
What, you're just ready so much? We're doing another one. No, this one, we've got one more, but you know what, Derek? I think we have to do a final subdivision, but it's really similar to, you know, the approval for the second one. What you could do is just make it, you want, instead of reading all that, just a duplicate of the preliminary, you can just make it subject to all items that were in preliminary subdivision, if you want to do that.
I'd like to make a motion for final subdivision approval for.
Subject to all conditions of the preliminary. Yeah, preliminary, preliminary subdivision.
Preliminary subdivision.
Okay, that's a motion, you second.
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Giardino?
Aye.
Mrs. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson? Mr. Malta?
I just have to.
Okay.
Okay, well, we've got that, I'll take it in turn. What do we have? We were talking about the sign, correct? Okay, you want to, if you got your sign, can you show it and so people over? You want to, you're mostly the best side here.
Yeah, so after the meeting last time, we went and took the signs and added some dimensions to it. Before they were just showing the layouts, and so I'll show those on here. So we did add some. The mouse isn't touching, sorry. We're still here right there. So we did add some additional dimensions and some additional notes just to clarify the intent and to show you that we mean the town code. So this is the sign at the auto entrance, and we show the daytime and nighttime image. And then this is the sign at the truck entrance, and then we added additional notes and dimensions, and then also the daytime and nighttime images. And then this last one is the sign that's on the building. So this is the office, office entrance, and you can kind of see that since it is such a large building, we wanted to show the size of the building and where this is located. It's just on the office entrance, and then we zoomed in, you can see it's right here at the, where the entrance is, and to show a little bit more clarity of what this sign looks like. Those would be three signs we wanted to show.
Should the address be larger, in your opinion?
That's it?
The address out here for the sign. We got Fairlife, and you got four, looks like four sixty, Basket Road, that's almost compared to the Fairlife. I mean, you got enough room there in the blue area to make it bigger.
You're referring to the actual address, is that what you're referring to?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it would be possible to increase the size slightly.
But in, in terms of maybe, if you guys feel that it should be increased, what?
I'm just asking for everyone's opinion.
I, I, I think it's fine, the size it is, it fits nice, it's centered, it's lightable, it's, it's lit up at night. And I know maybe it seems like it's a little smaller, because this is a small picture, but when it's in real life, I think it'll be plenty, you know?
I agree. Okay, leave it for this one. All right. Josh, sizes, they need code?
Yes.
Okay, so everything's good with that?
Correct.
It's immediate, I like the idea that you've got it toned down a bit, right? Where you still sit, but it's not glaring though? That's good. Okay, need a motion for a second? I'll make a motion, we approve the Fairlife signs, the three signs S. opposed, and you got the numbers, huh? S. opposed, I'll give you that.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion, you second.
Mr. Cussoni?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mrs. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Giardino?
Aye.
Mr. Malta? Okay, is that it? I think that's all we got, isn't it?
I think so.
Pretty much covered, Josh?
I think so.
Okay, good luck, guys.
Good luck.
Thank you, we really appreciate it.
It's been an interesting ride.
Yes. Thank you for all your help, we really do appreciate it.
Thank you. Welcome to town. All right. Let's see, we only have.
First, uh, first scheduled item tonight at seven forty-eight Hall Room, accessory structure, welcome to that, so. The applicant, Mark Hyden, is requesting preliminary funds sought by approval along with public territory associated with the legalization of a recently constructed three-hundred-and-sixty square foot accessory building, zero point eight nine acre parcel located in an R three single family residential district under section three fifty thirty-six of the code of the town of Webster.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm trying to seek, what I have is a, it's actually a shed that's forty feet long and fourteen feet wide.
Excuse me, could you just state your name and address?
My name's Mark Hyden.
I can't hear you very well in there, put that way.
My name's Mark Hyden.
Ah, there you go.
Seven forty-eight Hall Room. And I'm just trying to seek approval for the movable building or structure that I have there right now.
It's already there?
Yes, it's, it came in one piece. They delivered it on a trailer.
So how, so what'd you do, just go and move it in?
No, it was an accessory structure.
Okay, did you apply for an approval?
Well, what happened was my brother passed away next door.
Okay.
And he lived right next door to us. And I was looking at, we were looking at selling his house. So everything from my mother and father and rest of the family, all had to come over to my house plus two outbuildings, and I didn't have enough space for that. So what I had to do was search around and finally found heritage structures when I was on the west side of the city. And they had fourteen by forty that we walked in, and that was about the largest I could make, and they had one in stock, ready to roll off the door, basically.
Yeah, that's all, that's all fine, but did, did you try and get a storage facility somewhere instead of spending all the time and go look to buy them?
Well, we had, we had the storage facility across the street, but there is no room. There actually wasn't any room. All these, all these storage structures are taken up.
So you took it upon yourself, just go move whatever, okay, that's cool.
And, you know, just, just move it next door, that's a lot easier. And I still had a lot of stuff in the house too, a little.
Yeah, but why did you not have gotten a permit? I'm missing something here, I don't know.
Well, that's why, that's why it was a movable structure, just like a regular, like a shed?
Yeah.
And they delivered it on, because it was deliverable.
Yeah, but it doesn't mean deliverable.
I didn't think I needed, I didn't think I needed a building to come back for that.
You didn't?
No, I didn't think I needed one for that.
Serious?
Yes.
All right, okay. All right, I don't want this kind of stuff.
I'm sorry, which I'm sorry about, but I didn't know.
Did you, what you have, did you have your variances or anything? Another shed there?
Zoning, zoning was room.
You did?
Yes.
Yes, he appeared before the zoning board at the September meeting because the placement of the structure is not behind the rear wall of the house, so he, he did apply for a variance for the location, and it was approved.
Jeez. All right, anybody, any questions? Go ahead.
Can you get a variance for the number of storage facilities on this side? I don't remember, I think it's. There's only one, correct?
What's that?
There's only one accessory building on, on the site, correct?
Yeah, I think there's a ten, I have a ten by ten on that. That's bullshit, man.
And picture, you can second.
Guess those, yeah, I didn't know if it was on this property or the other. You had two outbuildings? Very well, you had two outbuildings, huh?
Yeah, it would be two, yeah, that would be two outbuildings.
Well, you're allowed to have one shed and one accessory structure, so this one counts as the accessory structure.
Right.
The ten by ten is a shed, which is allowed by code.
Okay. Usually when we get something like this comes in, we ask the applicant to bring in samples of the material, and in this case, you're bringing in the whole building, it's already done.
Yeah, I didn't really want to, I didn't want to do it.
All right, anybody have any questions? You see variances? I'm not thrilled with this type of application or, you know, Gash there well.
We're supposed to get a permit, but whatever.
All right, anybody have any questions or? Nothing? There's a public area, so is there anyone who wants to speak to the board against this? Well, okay, bring a band up to the board. Derek, one vote.
Yeah, town of West, the planning board consider request by applicant, our, and act to legalize a recently constructed five hundred and sixty square foot accessory building, zero point eight nine acre parcel, having S D L number zero six four point two zero dash two dash two six, located at seven forty-eight of the road. The planning board classifies a proposed action as a type two action under section six seventeen point five C twelve, under the state of the quality of the regulations, and therefore not subject to further legal.
Yes, a motion, you second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion for preliminary, uh, motion for preliminary, accessory building, seven forty-eight of the road, allowing accessory to the one accessory building, buildings that are fault in size and location, present in the plan. This one, the building shall conform and also pay the town.
It's already got it.
The question I have about this is, the size of this is pretty, like substantial, considering there isn't. And I'm not exactly sure how to handle this situation because it's already there, and I really don't understand what the options are for this applicant, because I certainly wouldn't want to set a precedence that it just gets approved, and then anybody else who has an accessory building can come in and say.
I agree with you.
I didn't, I didn't know, so I'm just stating that, like, for the record, because I'm really not sure how to handle this situation.
I agree, but how did the zoning board give a variance for it? Why, I don't know, but they gave a variance, and you did there. As easy as this was dropped off, it should have been picked up and moved until such time that you have a permit for it.
Josh, Josh, what were the, I don't have specific recollection, what, what, what was the significance of the variance, what was on the setback that were approved? Uh, I can't recall the exact setback, but the code requires that the front wall of the accessory structure be behind the rear wall of the primary home, and this was placed essentially in line with the home, but the front of it lines up way in front of the home, so it's, so it's not so much visible and looking straight out of the house on the road.
Yeah, it was set back a couple of feet, and made sure it was set back in the front of the house.
Right, but in alignment, but the front wall of the house within a couple of feet rather than the rear wall.
I found one with the rear wall.
The zoning board, this is a movable project. Yeah, right. It should have been picked up and moved back to where it was supposed to be, eliminate that variance.
You have to share.
It's a bit of a run from there, so.
Well, I, I just wanted to state that because I, it seems, oh.
Go ahead.
I don't want to impact you negatively per se, but.
Go ahead, finish your motion. Okay, no commercial use, sell it current parcel, accessory, no, we shall be used for personal use only, find it on the code. It's all done. Why don't you just make it subject to S. presented and forget it? It's, it's there, unfortunate, and you got to do it. Something in the shed. Okay, then motion be second. Derek.
Mr. Walton?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mrs. Wright?
No.
Mr. Kessel?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Do you say no to?
Mr. Giardina?
No.
Mr. Kishan?
No.
Tended to say no, but I will say yes because it did get the variance and it's there. But this has got to be... Really understood that this is not the way that it should be going, but I'll hold this. So it's about four, three? You got approval?
Yes.
Alright, we got your approval apparently, but...
Right, you're served.
And we sure appreciate you doing things right for this stuff. And it, it just creates more hardship for everybody.
I understand.
Alright, thank you.
Can you, uh, Mark, can you follow up?
I'm down, sorry, we have a final, like, two finals, please. Motion be second, Hall Road, seven forty eight Hall Road. Okay. Motion be second. I'll second.
Mr. Walton?
Aye.
Mr. Kishani?
Aye.
Mr. Giardina?
No.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mr. Kessel?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mrs. Wright?
No.
Alright, I guess you're all set.
But if you could follow up with the building department for a building permit and then...
That's my order.
Thank you.
Okay, the last scheduled matter, excuse me, for the Morris Drive, the Orange Plaza redevelopment located at nine sixty four Ridge Road. Applicant Matt Tomlinson, Marathon Engineering is requesting preliminary final set plan review along with public hearing associated with the proposed redevelopment. For the former Hagganum Supermarket Plaza, a six point six eight acre parcel located in an eight seed high intensity commercial district under section two sixty nine dash eleven of the code of the town.
Good evening, Matt Tomlinson, Marathon Engineering, uh, Al Diesel Wood is the, uh, project architect and we've got various representatives of the owners with us as well. Appreciate the board's time tonight, we are, uh, talking about the Hagganum Plaza and bring up the concept site under it first here to talk about. We were here, I believe, last month before the board and really, uh, from our standpoint on the development side and what we discussed with the board. We have not changed anything, uh, relative to it other than adding a significant amount of detail in the plans and application materials that we have submitted to the board. Um, so I'm just going to run through as a brief reminder of what we're looking at and what we're accomplishing and then, uh, turn over to Al to talk about the elevations and the building facade improvements as well. So, uh, for the board's, uh, remembrance, we're increasing or, um, improving, excuse me, traffic circulation and pedestrian access and ADA accessibility throughout the plaza as part of this redevelopment. Which includes dressing up the facade primarily focused on the east and east side, south corner. And in doing that, we're lifting, uh, the large majority of the parking lot and changing the circulation pattern, uh, for accessing to the site to take a lot of the steepness of the existing driving parking lot out. In doing so, that does reduce, uh, some of the number of parking spaces available at the upper level of the plaza, which is the primary retail, uh, entrance or focus of the redevelopment portion. Warrants, which is on the lower level, we're proposing to re-strike that lower parking lot and add a little parking to make the numbers approximately equal to what they are today. And incorporating and really increasing functionally the amount of parking that can be used by any tenant throughout the plaza by, uh, creating a access point that will, uh, provide vertical connection from the upper sidewalk and facade area down to the lower area. Uh, whether that's stair or elevator, yeah, it's going to be an elevator, uh, through there, so every space on the project will have ADA accessibility to it. Um, related to that, we also received, uh, several comments from both town staff and, uh, the town engineer. Which we were able to incorporate some of those into the plan set that was submitted for your consideration for preliminary final approval. And then subsequent to that, we also replied to that letter and writing, uh, which was sent in, uh, earlier today, not with much notice for you guys, but we reviewed all the technical comments. And, uh, areas of, uh, concern related to staff, confident that we can address those as we go through, um, the approval process prior to signature down the plan. I'm happy to discuss any of those in detail with the board, but I did want to touch just on a couple of them. Number one, related to trash and loading, I think we discussed this last time, but the loading dock that faces Bridge Road will only be used for shorter trucks that will not impact or encroach on sidewalk or driveline. Within East Ridge Road, those larger delivery vehicles will use the loading dock at the rear of the plaza. Trash and compacters, there's a covered area underneath the building comprised within the lower level, that will continue to be the trash and recycling area, so again, that pickup will not be visible, will be screened at the back of the building. There was a commenter, a request for two items that are not yet reflected.
Excuse me, Matt, where, where are you, where are you, I'm looking at the comments here, you said number one?
Oh, I'm sorry, the first one I wanted to mention, but it's not number one.
Oh, alright, I'm looking at it.
I think, point you're right to that one.
You know, if you've got this, would it be better to just, the board and anybody?
Just go right through them in order?
Just go right through them?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I think that'd be an easier way to...
We can definitely do that. So the, the comments that the chairman is, uh, trimming me out on here is a letter that we dated for today, but we grouped them, uh, by who wrote them, at least from our understanding. So the M R B group comments, number one, signature blocks for town representatives being added to the plans, no problem, we of course will make sure that those are on there prior to signature. Town and agency standard notes, those will be added to the plan prior to signature. Uh, there's a question related to perforated pipe being used within the parking area. We are proposing to construct, uh, several or two retaining walls really to make up the grade difference within the existing parking and raise that upper parking area and then the road or access drive will drop below that. So the perforator pipe really is to ensure that we remove drainage that could get into the sub base underneath the paving and ensure that we're not, uh, directing water or allowing water to build up behind those retaining walls. We have not performed any test pits in that parking lot or geotechnical exploration, so if the results of that, uh, dictate or require a different treatment or solid pipe versus perforated pipe, we'll clarify that prior to, uh, final signatures on the plans as well. Moving on to page two, comment number four, the existing system, storm system, there's a couple of comments on storm system. One is related, and I think this one is specific to the existing drainage system within the access drive along the north portion of the property. Right now, uh, those basins are choked up a little bit and we'll be cleaning those out as part of this project. And we'll be connecting, uh, some of the drainage along the lower area, which I'm highlighting with my cursor here, to it. Um, and while we have not done exploration downstream on the storm sewer, we are reducing the amount of water that runs to that area in the first place. And then in second place, we are adding a significant amount of green space within the area that drains to that. So regardless of the capacity or condition, we will be improving the existing conditions for the point where the storm sewer goes off of our property. Uh, there is a comment about check dams within the square between the parking lot and entrance road, we will be preparing a stormwater prevention prevention plan. We are, uh, just under an acre in disturbance of what is classified as disturbance by the D E C and that is area where the dirt gets exposed either through removal of pavement or regrading of green areas. Areas where we are removing pavement and placing, uh, stone or fill on top of it are not classified as disturbance if there's six inches of crushed stone underneath the pavement limits. So the large majority of the parking lot that we will be filling, again, dependent somewhat on the material that comes in, which we'll be working with the owners on. Uh, may or may not classify as disturbance with that definition by the state D E C. However, it's our understanding that the town requires a SWIP to be prepared when over twenty-six thousand square feet of impervious. So we will be preparing that and complying with all best management practices for erosion and sediment control. And comments five and six really relate to that, both with the check dams and the silt fence, so we will be complying with those. Uh, the fill material we have not sourced yet, we're working on that with various site contractors and pricing this out, so we will have information on that by the time we get to the pre-construction meeting with town staff. The domestic water service diameter material, there's multiple water services to the plaza. And right now, we're proposing to reroute one of the services, which is the domestic one, around the retaining wall and reconnecting it. We're in the process of working with our M E P engineers right now to determine if that service is in fact needed once we replumb, uh, the redevelopment of the plaza. Because typically the water authority asks that there only be one meter for a single property or tax count number. So we have a little bit more coordination to do with the water authority and, uh, plumbing engineers. If it's not needed, that won't be reconnecting. If it is needed, we will of course add the requested labels. Uh, building department, uh, it's my understanding that we will be bringing the building up to New York State Building Code, that'll all be part of the building permit package, no issues there. The sewer department had a couple of comments related to grease traps and laterals, that will also be part of the building permit package and we will be in full compliance with their requirements. They included a, a commenter, a request for some more information over warrants tenant space. That space is intended to remain, uh, as that tenant is going to be there. And so we will work to provide whatever information the building inspector, sewer department is requesting, but as of right now, there's no proposed changes within that tenant space. And then from staff are the next ones, and I'm on page three under community development. Uh, the primary perimeter landscaping green area, uh, we worked with the owners to really try to create, uh, a nice streetscape and dress up the view of the plaza from Hard Road specifically. And also along the corner at Hard and Ridge Road. A request for some additional green space between the two driveways is the second comment that I wanted to highlight and discuss with the board. Right now, the, the request is for, uh, and I'm highlighting with my cursor, a stretch of about sixty feet in length between the curb cut where the normal, uh, passenger vehicles, uh, enter and exit the plaza. And where the loading dock curb cut and an additional curb cut, I guess you could say, uh, for passenger vehicles exist today. This area is quite a bit narrow, where we were able to push, uh, the parking edge about ten feet from the existing sidewalk where Bridge Road was because there was no building structure to limit the, uh, layout or design of that parking area. In this area here between, uh, the building and Ridge Road, we are constrained by, uh, the parking spaces, the loading dock and turning movements for trucks and vehicles as they many times come in and pull out here and then back into that loading dock with the shorter trucks so as not to have to back up on Ridge Road proper. There also would be, uh, snow plowing of the sidewalks, which would place that snow after, uh, being plowed right into the parking area. So creating or extending landscaping through that constrained area would be very difficult to accomplish. And so we'd like to request that the board, um, consider our answer on that with, respectfully, we wish we had more room there and could continue that, but the pavement width that's in there really serves a, a good function and purpose on the south side of the plaza there.
Could you, Matt, could you eliminate, we've got eight or nine parking spaces that are right along the building?
So that, those parking spaces are for this corner tenant that's very interested in having approximate ADA, uh, spaces in parking close to their front door, uh, there. Um, we're also, as you know, slightly reducing parking spaces within the plaza, so each of those spaces are, um... I won't say required, but important to the overall functionality of the plaza and access for, for clients and customers of, of the tenants.
Okay, then where have you got to the west of the loading dock there, showing green area?
It's existing, uh, landscaping today or a sloped area that drops, the grade drops quite a bit from the loading dock down to the lower level, I think there's about sixteen feet in elevation, top to bottom. Uh, so that's just a sloped area down, um, along there and it basically falls off from right behind the sidewalk, let's see if I can show it.
Where are you, from the back of those parking spaces that we were just referring to?
I'm sure I've got some dimensions on here which might help my answer because I don't remember. So there's about fifty...
Fifty-seven feet?
That's from the facade, there's about fifty feet from the curb line to the back edge of the sidewalk.
So fifty feet. So the parking spaces, we need to back up twenty feet, or I don't even know.
Uh, the drive aisles throughout the parking lot are twenty-five feet up to the twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay. So we have parking spaces, which come out there, and we add twenty-five feet, it's still easier, so we move it along Ridge Road too.
Yeah, there is some room, but again, the, the entering, uh, vehicles, a lot of times instead of, uh, pulling, uh, this way and backing into the loading dock will either pull in, uh, to that wider curb cut and back in, so they're not backing up within the Ridge Road travel lane. Or they're pulling this way and need that wider room in order to come through and back up into the loading dock area. So it's not just for the, those parking spaces, but also functionally for the delivery vehicles at that, at that area. And, and again, we're limiting tractor trailers, but do need some functionality for the smaller delivery trucks to be able to access that space to...
Alright. Okay.
So I, I can come back to that for further discussion if needed, but I can go through the rest of the comments.
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, breakdown of tax base for footages and proposed uses, I believe that Al has provided that to, uh, code enforcement, but that'll also be included in the building, uh, permit package that'll be coming in as well. Uh, the signage, I'd like to come back to that one with the elevation drawings, I'll just go through the site items first and then turn it over to Al. Uh, dumpster location. Again, that's an existing dumpster location within the lower level of the plaza, which is down at the rear, kind of in the elbow of the existing building at the lower level. That'll remain and still continue to be used. Snow storage areas, we'll have those on the final plans for signature, but we have made accommodation in a lot of the green spaces around the parking that we created as part of this. I touched on the D E C stormwater and the town requirement for the SWIP to be prepared, so we'll be in full compliance with that. And then the final comment related to drainage, uh, as mentioned, that connection for the lower road that we're making into the existing system here and we'll be flushing that system. But the majority of the parking, which all kind of drains right down the hill right now, we're picking up in a closed drainage system and we're planning to tie that into the structure that's mentioned by the highway department. That's within the lawn area between the parking area and Hard Road. We, um, believe that that structure is within the town's right of us, so we'll be working with the highway department and the town engineer just to ensure that that is a satisfactory to all parties connection point. But that's a thirty inch storm system where the system to the north, uh, through the private property, uh, appears to only be a twelve inch storm sewer, so we think that that's most likely a better connection point for our system, but we will clarify that with staff. I believe I may have skipped over one comment and that was one that also has not been addressed on the plans in front of you yet, but we look forward to working with the town on it. And that is related to trying to create a sidewalk along Hard Road for the frontage. There's quite a bit of grade change from north to south on the property, excuse my voice. There's quite a bit of grade change from north to south on the property, excuse my voice. We're up at about elevation four forty-five at the intersection of Ridge Road and Hard Road. And by the time we get to the south driveway entrance, we're down around four twenty-four. So we're about twenty feet in elevation change along there. There's several utilities, both drainage and electric poles and, uh, associated guy wires, et cetera. So while we don't necessarily want to include the expense of the sidewalk in the project, we understand the request from the town and the owners directed me to explore if we can fit that sidewalk in there with the existing constraints and grades. So we'll work with town staff on that prior again to obtaining signatures on the plans. So with that, I'll turn it over to Al just to talk about the elevations and signage. If I've got that in here. That's on page three, number five, four, number five.
My name's Al Hazel again, I'm the architect for the project. As regards to the on-screen monitors, we have the two rendered elevations, which will be the, the east and the south. Um, the south is where we've had them in the last few minutes discussing feasibility of some landscape offer coordination of trying to provide the tenant at the corner, some additional parking, um, building. It roughly indicates the colors that are standard choices for the blue and gray corporation. The metal, the roofing elements are, um, scanning metal roofing. Consistent with the, uh, the small covering where the loading dock area and, um, the towers have, uh, the same material utilized. We've indicated rectangular, rectangles, white in this case, for signage locations. Um, the ones that are at the towers are, at this point, meant to be identifiers of the glass. Those are the ones at the doors or in the portions that are in between the towers are indicators of the tenant space. And when your building inspector initially had posed, it seemed like there was four entrances, there were only three tenants. Um, the center tenant is a low-grade restaurant and temp room, which kind of function as one tenant. They have separate entrances, so they can operate a little bit separately. They have a little bit more function that way. However, is, at this point designated for the building with three tenants. I don't really know what else, is there some additional questions that poses for people? I'd be happy to try to address those questions specifically.
Is it the windows, are those, is that glass top to bottom? Is this what it's looking like?
Yes, most of it is. The bottom portions obviously are, are going to be, uh, shatter resistant like code requirements would be. Um, some of the ones on the front corner here that they're showing in your picture in the south, um, portion of those are going to be blacked out glass because they're actually going to have walls behind them. We wanted to create the, the element of the glass being co- completely visible from the street in respect to its openness and be involved in here.
Features right there between those pillars right there between the glass, is that brick or stone or something?
Yes, it's, um, it's some stone, it's veneered stone on the block because the, the structure of the building currently is all masonry. And we intend to apply synthetic stone to this. And then the stone actually, in some of those locations where the cursor is, you can see, if you file that up past the roof, that's actually the same stone material. So we have a deviation in the elements of the-
No, actually, I think we'd do a nice job with that. I would have liked to see some landscaping along there, but it doesn't, it doesn't fit.
There are spots within the sidewalk going out that we would more like to designate as some planting areas, which you referenced here.
Yeah, um, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if you are referring to the Ridge Road side or along the facade side, but we have tried to incorporate a couple of planters within the sidewalk areas, um, that will have some seasonal plantings along the sidewalk area, uh, along the Hard Road side as well. Um, just don't have that reflected in the landscaping plan, but it is planned for.
Yeah, I was referring to Ridge Road side actually, yeah, the, their dead area. Because it's land, there's nothing, you know. You know, other buildings, there's used to be no on-screen area in there. Um, you know, years ago, when what's the town center came? They were supposed to plant trees along the expressway where the retention pond, retention pond is. And my feeling was a total waste with trees there because it's woods. It's full of trees anyways, why are we planting, why are we getting to plant trees? So my suggestion was for sidewalk along whole road. Use that same money and put that piece of walk, you put that sidewalk. And there were people who said it'll never get used, well, it gets used. So in regard to the sidewalk here, eliminating that, I think it was a few bucks in the money to put in the sidewalk there.
Along Hard Road, yes, yeah.
I think, I know it's a twenty-foot drop, it's doable.
Yeah, I think it's really going to come down to, uh, whether or not there's horizontal space. I think we can definitely work out the vertical. There's some language within the ADA guidelines for dedicated roadway improvements that let you match, uh, the road slope instead of having to comply with, uh, shallower five percent like you do on normal sidewalks. So again, we'll work with the highway, uh, superintendent and, uh, and the town engineer and then try to come up with a solution and install that sidewalk.
Okay, all right. There's a few things, I think there still need to be addressed here, but you know, we'll keep moving forward with it, but I- As I'm listening to what you're saying, that I'm thinking give up preliminary approval and reserve final approval until all of these things are completed. There's that whole idea, but it should be all on the final drawings prior to an approval. You know, there's some things that are like, yeah, we're going to do this, but we'll do that, but it really should be done before final approval is created. It's a pretty good sized project here.
Yep, understood. I'm not a hundred percent sure what that does from a scheduling standpoint, since I can't make, I can't tell right now, but, uh, I don't know that, could, the preference would be to obtain final if possible, but you okay going back next month, Jim, with these addressed or? I thought perhaps it was the worst discretion.
If we, we give final approval based on what, there's some things lacking in here and it's, it's acknowledged, but it's got to be on a drawing, a lot of this stuff, all of this stuff. And it'll give you, what, three or four weeks to get this completed? Come in with it and then it's capable. This is very similar to what we just dealt with, with, uh, with Fairlight. You know, they came in and they were ready for final approval, but there were just a few things lacking. We've gotten blown with those kinds of situations before and that's why I bring it up.
We were just, we're hoping that we could work with, um, Matt and the town and because we do have winter setting in, you know, they want to get this rolling and there's a decent amount of site with it. Uh, so if they have to wait for the final approval, that's going to hold start construction out of sight.
I don't think it's important.
Josh, it's impossible to do like a, we're meeting like we did for Fairlight in two weeks, but there, there is quite a few things.
If they can complete them, I don't know if they can complete them.
Right, but understanding the fill, usually seeing some of the building materials, the landscaping plan, the, the drainage, uh, those are, those are pretty substantial things, um, so-
Well, I, I would offer that the, the, uh, I don't know if you said drainage plan, the landscaping plan is within the package that's, that was submitted to the board and reviewed. So, uh, I know that there's some tweaks that need to be made to those, but it is part of the package with relatively minor comment.
The, and that, fair, fair point, but not understanding, we're still having to determine the type of, um, fill material that can be used and how that impacts the drainage. And I heard more coordination with the Modern County Water Authority, um, and still, still need to do the geotech explorations. So I think landscaping aside, there's still a few other things that are fairly um, impactful and meaningful that would make it difficult to do a final approval.
Paul, what would you think on this?
Well, I think, um, preliminary approval would be prudent, um, but I would say that if it comes back to the planning board on the seventh of November, that would give, um, the P R C committee to meet on the second. Um, they should be able to have all the i's dotted and the t's crossed. Have everybody on the P R C who they're kind of in their final review.
I prefer that.
They should be able to come in to the planning board for the next meeting, you know, with everything addressed.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, again, it's public hearing, there's no, we shouldn't speak. You know, and I guess we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board, any comments? They've covered pretty much everything, they've done a good job with it, but there are things, you know, we just don't need to get further than that. We've done in the past with some of these preliminary finals. And basing, basing it on the engineer's suggestion too, I'd say we move on from this. So we move forward, you guys okay to move forward with preliminary? Okay, all right, well, then we have to do a super, right, Eric, you want to do that?
Motion for an listed action. Town wants a plan more conservative, request by, uh, Matt Talbot, who's an urban designer to redevelop former engineer, former heavy-lawn supermarket plaza, uh, six point six eight acre park under S B L number zero seven nine point one five dash one, dash one point one. Located at nine sixty-four Ridge Road on a high intensity commercial district. Planning board determines that a proposed action is an unlisted action. The planning board determined that the action is subject to simulations or review pursuant to part six seventeen point six four of S E C, that is the most appropriate agency for making a determination of significance. The planning board therefore designated itself lead agency for the proposed action. The planning board has given consideration of the criteria that determine the significance set forth in six seventeen point seven C one of S E C and has one, considered the information contained in the sure form of assessment form part one dated August thirty of two thousand and three. Do you consider color of channels directed at the planning board? During the public hearing on, till the third, two thousand and three, and three is completed parts to the environment in such form. Now therefore be resolved that the town of Webster planning board hereby determines that a proposed action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for reasons set forth in the catch notice of determination of non-significance. Be further resolved that the town of Webster planning board is authorized to make all actions reasonable and necessary to file a negative declaration and discharge the town of Webster planning board's responsibility as lead agency for this action. Be further resolved that the town of Webster planning board, based on the information and analysis of the American support documentation, the discussions on the action that the town of Webster planning board has documented within minutes for this meeting, that the proposed action will not result in a significant environmental impact. Be further resolved that the town of Webster planning board therefore makes a determination of non-significance. Be further resolved that the town of Webster planning board, based on the vote issues and negative declaration, has had an explicit determination.
Okay, I have a motion, you, you second.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Posel?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Can you get a take?
Mr. Mixel?
Okay, all right, um-
I vote aye as well.
Okay, a motion for, a motion for preliminary approval. Are we going to make a motion?
We can motion for preliminary approval, taking this place of redevelopment, located in nine sixty-four Ridge Road. Something to P R C candidates, something to have a credit issue with the county director, for example. Something from the authority candidates. Were there any barriers or appearances required for this?
No.
All improvements shall be constructed according to specifications of the town investor. All roadway construction according to the specification regulations set forth in the town investor. All sign workers to make compliance with the standards of the town investor. Apply the following requirements of any state, county, and town agencies. Address areas, lighting, signs, landscaping, often drawing, and snow storage. Buildings are subject to drawing and work. What is the number of that? You drawing over?
Uh, which improvements, I'm sorry?
The job number.
Oh, job, our job.
Your job number?
Our job, fifteen nine six.
Fifteen nine? Five nine six dash two. Catch, your motion intercept, I'm sorry. Motion intercept.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Posel?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mrs. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Duchesne?
Aye.
Okay, um, preliminary approval, what are we doing? Suggestion is to hold it?
Oh, I'll make a motion to, I just see one of the five no approvals. Do you need a motion?
No, we had table on there. We're just holding up, we received preliminary approval.
Okay.
And the applicant to return, I don't know.
Oh, it's election day.
Or whatever the days are, yeah. Are you in session? Yeah, it's election day? Election. Is that election day?
Yeah, we're not.
So we're not? So, okay, so what are we doing?
Wait, what's?
Two weeks?
It's been a two week.
It says the seventh, it's going to see, is that?
I don't think they use this for, or-
No, it's the first Tuesday.
It is the first Tuesday.
First Tuesday. That's the first Monday, so it is election day.
So, okay, so suppose, suppose we made it in three weeks, shorten it up a week, and we have a special meeting, that help you guys?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, you, you guys want to do that?
Mr. Duchesne, does it have to go to P R C prior to filing? Because if it does, that's not going to work.
This P R C, this, this week, this Thursday's P R C.
Correct.
Right?
But I'm not going to have, I'm not going to have a full revised-
I'm sorry, what?
The nineteen, it's the next one, P R C after that. If the P R C needs the full revised package and answers to the questions, then we would not have it by this Thursday to the P R C. Question put up by the nineteen.
Josh, how long do you need to publish it?
Well, it's an internal, it's not a publishing. You mean the legal notice or the P R C?
Yeah.
Legal, legal notice. Uh, very- Less than five, no, three, ten, so, sort of.
So what date would work then?
Is, is, is this the Thursday or January day? And that probably the day five, it would not be five, this would be like two, this is the day. From the nineteenth and the twenty-fourth, which would put it to like Halloween, or yeah, Halloween and the election day.
Halloween.
Well, that's who you are, so what, what I'd like to suggest is, Chris, well, let's,
you can notify the applicant, you have time to publish, you have time for the P R C, but why don't you go and check that the seventh is problematic, maybe it is not.
Well, according to my calendar here, it says November seventh is election.
I, I do scan it, but I'm just saying that it's not in this building, right, there's no-
Yes, it is.
Election is?
Yeah, voting is in this building.
It is?
It's on the court side, we're fine. That's why we're having it on seven.
Yeah, so it's on the other side.
It's on the other side, you go.
So you make a great well being here. So I would say believe it on the seventh, and if for some reason we find out that that's a problem, I would still notify the...
Yes, that's good. That's a, that's a... All right, that's it, then I guess we're seven. All right, with that, I guess we're all done. Anybody have anything else, any minutes?
Yeah. Anyone else? I'm going to make a motion to approve the September nineteenth minutes. Second, all the favors?
Aye.
Five, we don't oppose. That wasn't bad. That wasn't bad.
There, we're all set.
I went to your house, I know.
She did?
She did, but she left.
Yeah, she...
I mean, yes, yes.